I'm calling the board to do the Hazelcrest meeting at 7:06. Trustee Reyes, please.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And the board will call please.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Moore?
Present.
Trustee Ramsey?
Here.
Trustee Reyes?
Here.
Trustee Rogers?
Here.
Trustee Slayton?
Here.
President Osberry?
Here. We have four. Where please?
Shall we all stand? Father God, we thank you once again for bringing us together, for allowing us to see another day, for blessing us to have life, health, strength, food, clothing, and shelter. But we ask that you look on this meeting today as you always have, oh God. Give us the wherewithal to work together, to continue to work together, to move Hazelcrest forward. These blessings we asking your name.
Amen.
Any consideration possible remote?
No.
Any correspondence?
None.
Manager's report. I just want to thank the special services, the board department, and the rest of staff for the demolitions we've had going on the last couple of months. And also some of the street repairs, Percy Birchwood. Those street repairs have made it easier for them to drive up and down the street. It's been many, many years since that street has been repaid. The demolitions have been great. We've opened up on Park Avenue. That corner is now wide open for redevelopment. We also, as many of you have heard before, the metro station is actually in progress of being renovated and rehabbed over on Park Avenue. They should be completed next summer. So that's moving right along. Wood Street is now complete. They finished Wood Street over in Hazelcrest proper, and they also have finished 171st Street.
170th.
170th Street. And so those streets now have been repaid. So, well, we've been doing some great work. I want to thank everyone for participating. And with that, that is my report. Madam Manager.
Thank you. The first item I have is the presentation of the audit for fiscal year ending April 30, 2017 by Whitley. And you put on your, in front of your seat, a different PowerPoint than you have in the red.
It should look like this. About seven, eight pages.
Yeah.
Thank you, Manager Gaden. I'm Bill Hanley. I'm with the accounting firm Whitley. With me is Senior Manager Brad Werner. We just want to give a short presentation about the recent audit that we performed. If you look at a few pages, then we have an audit timeline. But before I go into that, I first want to thank Donna and her staff for all their help and cooperation with the audit. It was very much appreciative. They were very helpful. We certainly do appreciate that. So thank you for so on that.
Thank you.
And also, I want to congratulate this with the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Finance Report. This is, I think, the 36th great year that Hazelcrest has been awarded that designation. So you can be very proud of that. When you go to the audit timeline, this process began back in May and June. We had planning meetings with RSM and Representative John George is with us here tonight also. He and his staff were very instrumental in helping us plan to get this audit off to a good start. We started fieldwork the week of July 10th. We met with management, had an exit meeting on September 13th, and we're, of course, presenting to the board tonight, October 24th. I think this is approximately three months maybe ahead of last year. So I think that's great, great progress. It's always good to have timely financial reports and have all the proper filings with the state. So. A few highlights, the actual kind of nuts and bolts of the audit report. The audit report, as you know, is over 100 pages. The most important piece is the audit opinion. That's pages one and two. That's, you know, what the audit is. In our opinion, all the audit procedures that we performed, we had what's called an unmodified or a clean opinion. That's the highest level of audit reports. Management is responsible for the preparation of the financial statements. Our responsibility is expressing an opinion on those financial statements, and we were able to give an unqualified opinion. There's also in the reporting package what's called MDNA, Management's Discussion Analysis. That's on pages three to 11. That's a high-level overview of what happened at the village during the past year. And then there's the, on page 12 and 13, that's the government-wide financial statements. These are done on full accrual, accrual basis of accounting as opposed to cash basis. And accrual basis financial statements include your fixed assets, your bonds payable, and your long-term liabilities for pensions, and your OPEB, your other post-employment benefits. The next page of the handout, we've highlighted some actual numbers here. If you look at the government activity funds, which is all the funds of the village except for the water and sewer and other business-type activities, you'll see that the assets of the village went down from about $30,723 to $28,337. This is a snapshot in time. This is, you know, April 30, 16, and April 30, 17. At that date, at each of those dates, comparing them, the assets have gone down. And the largest contributor to that decrease is that your fixed assets have depreciation, okay? And that's about $1.5 million a year. That's a non-cash expenditure. But for financial purposes, we have to show that reduction as your fixed assets decline in value. The business-type activities, well, excuse me, I got ahead of myself a little bit. The liabilities of the government activities funds, they show an increase from $44,524,000 to $45,936. That's an increase of $1,411,000. And that is, relates almost entirely to the increase in pension liabilities and your OPEB, which is, again, your other post-employment benefits for health insurance. The business-type activities were very stable between the two years. The assets were almost identical year-on-year. Liabilities were very, very close year-on-year. The net position had a slight reduction of about $93,000 from year-on-year. So those business-type activities, you really look at those as if you're kind of running a business, and you look at the rates you're charging for your services, your water rates compared to your expenses, and they appear to be consistent, be in good order. If you have any questions at any time, don't hesitate to ask me. The next page is recap from the statement of activities. This is the revenue and expenses of the village. The revenue declined from 2016 to 2017 by about $1.2 million. And that's a little bit misleading because the 2016 year had approximately $2 million in capital outlay grants, I think it was for roadwork. And there was, of course, for 2016, a corresponding outlay of capital, a capital outlay of about that same amount. So on the revenue side, if you back out that $2 million capital grant, there was an actual increase in property tax revenues of about $700,000 between the two years. There was an increase in your assessed valuation, which helped, of course, but we thought that was important to note. The, on the expense side, it shows a $724,000 reduction. But again, that can be misleading because of the $2 million capital outlay that was in the $19 million expense total for 2016. Comparing 16 to 17, there was about $500,000 additional expense in 17 compared to 16, and that was for police protection and the inspection departments, and also the OPEB and the pension The business-type activities, the revenue and expenses, as you can see there, were very, very consistent from year to year. Revenue was about $28,000 higher, and the expenses were down by about $70,000. So comparing the business-type activities, there was a $98,000 improvement in 17 compared to 16. I think the, you know, the challenges that the village faces, of course, is the pension These are big numbers, large numbers. The net liabilities, when I say net, this is after you consider the, like, for the police pension fund, the net liability after you subtract the assets in the police pension fund itself are about $19 million. Fire is $8 million. IMRF is 3, and OPEB is about $7 million. So there's close to 30, I think it's $37 million of liabilities that have to be addressed. And you're not alone in that, you know. Every village throughout the state is dealing with that. And two years ago, all villages were required to record that liability on the financial statements, and everyone's fund balance took a substantial hit that year. Any questions about the financial numbers? Okay, we'll talk about a couple of other things then. Here, the village has four TIF districts, 167th, 183rd, Hazelcrest, and Cherry Creek. We audited those funds. There were no compliance findings at all. There's separate reports submitted showing the activity in those funds. They'll be submitted to the state. If there were substantial funds spent of $750,000 or more, there'd be an additional type of audit done. That was not required this year because the expenditures were below that level. Two other pieces of reporting that we always like to talk about, there's a, we call it, it's referred to as a governance letter. We have to communicate with those in governance, which is, of course, you know, you as trustees, any disagreements that we had with management, any adjustments to the financial statements that we proposed that they didn't agree with. And we're happy to report that there were none, that there were no disagreements with management or any issues that we proposed that we couldn't see eye to eye on. So that's certainly positive. The other letter or report that we issue is an internal control letter, and there's very few, there's only a single finding in that letter. And a lot of that can be because of the outsourcing of a lot of the accounting functions to RSM. The only item that we talk about in our internal control letter is there were a handful of balance sheet accounts that probably could have been or should have been reconciled during the year a little more timely basis. We had to propose some adjustments there, but that was just, I think, a little bit kind of a transition timing. I don't foresee any problem with that going forward. I think that'll be next year. I don't think there'll be any problem with that at all. So, so overall, you know, it's, the numbers, as I said earlier, are challenged, so that you look at the actual numbers and you see deficit fund balances, which you never like to see, but that relates to the pension liabilities. But, you know, I think the key point is that you just stay diligent and work on your budgets and controlling costs and keep doing the best you can with the village. So. Any questions?
As you said, everyone has his problem with the pension fund. How did, you know, I don't know, we don't have an answer to that. I think every municipality and city, the state of Illinois, have a problem with retirement funds. So hopefully everybody retire at the same time.
Hopefully everyone doesn't retire at the same time.
Right. I did have a question about the trends and equalized assessed value. What, can you kind of explain to me what this statement is basically saying? Are we cooping back? Are we still decreasing? Where are we at with that?
Well, that's what page about, 100 and...
It's on the beginning page, through to summary, but...
Oh, okay.
Number three.
The assessed valuation, okay. In 2015 was $127 million, okay? For 2000, I'm on page 103 if you want to turn to the detail. That assessed valuation increased to $132 million, okay? So that's positive, okay? But really, what's the other piece of that, okay? Is you have to look at the tax rate, okay? The village has had to increase their tax rate the last several years because of the declining assessed valuation to get sufficient dollars to run your operations, you know. Back in 2012, your assessed valuation was $155 million. Your rate was 4.5, okay? Now, again, because of the declining assessed valuation, your rate's up at almost to 6, 5.97, so. Was that, did I answer that question?
Page 103.
Okay. And you can see that the total dollars that are generated from property taxes last year were $7.3 million, or I'm sorry, $7.5 million. This year it's $7.9 million. Back in 2012, it was about $7 million, so. So that's how the interplay of the assessed valuation and property tax dollars works.
Any other questions? Okay.
Yeah, just to give an overview from our perspective, from RSM. So I'm, sorry, thank you for adding me here. John George, I'm a partner with RSM. There you go. And, you know, just revisiting our role in the process as former auditors. We issued our report last year, the audit report in January, and came into play with the need for assisting the village with accounting assistance in an effort to get the financial reporting more timely, more accurate, and help the village through, you know, saving costs and improving financial, you know, financial reporting. So the process for us went really well as far as, you know, working with management, working with the audit firm. Communication was continuous and seamless. We had consistent status meetings and making sure that they were provided everything they needed for the audit. So it brought us to where we are today. So a lot sooner than earlier, timely, and it has been in the past, which is what we wanted. So a cleaner, a clean report, which we've issued, we've had clean reports in the past, but a more timely report, improved controls, fewer control deficiencies than we've had in the past, and that, fewer journal entries, which tell you your monthly financial reporting is improving. So the fewer journal entries we have at year end, the fewer issues we have with the monthly reporting. So you can rely on the information that you're receiving from management's more accurate and timely. So the process has gone well from our end, and we think it's worked out, worked out well for the village as well. So, but, you know, from a financial perspective, like Bill said, you know, all municipalities are struggling with the pension funding. I think the village has done a good job with increasing contributions. What you can do is continue to focus on that financial management capacity of funding your pension plans as much as possible, and, you know, continuing to improve your financial performance and focusing on, you know, the challenge of continually increasing your revenues as much as possible and holding your costs as much as possible. You want to contain and sustain of those, that fund balance. Right now, the end of, at the end of 4/30/17, the general fund's fund balance is about 34% of your operating expenses in the fund, which, if you, you know, from a rating agency perspective, you know, the median is about 30%, so you're, you know, from a fund balance perspective, a little ahead of where the median is. But you want to continue to, you want to continue to maintain that. And as you increase your pension funding, as you have strains on revenue and increased costs, it's always a challenge. So it's going to be a consistent challenge and focus on maintaining that, maintaining your fund balance and improving that pension funding. So, yeah, it was a good process. So no issues on our end.
Any questions on account?
Just clarification, you said our fund balance is at about 34%?
34% of the expenses.
34% of the expenses.
So that's about four months, four months of costs and fun, of expenses and fund balance, where, you know, if you can get, you know, your property taxes are in a six-month roll. I mean, a six-month of fund balance is a healthier fund balance. But, you know, that's one of the things we're going to try and work on, right? I mean, we've been, we've been working on cleaning up the monthly financial reporting. We'd like to get into more long-term planning, financial planning, and whether that's budgeting, long-term projections on budgeting, and capital planning to...
So what's our goal? What's a desirable number?
Well, what we'd want to do is create a fund balance policy to set that, and then also look at a funding policy on your pension plans, right? And having a funding target for that. So you build those both together into your budgeting process and have a plan that would take you out on a long-term basis to make sure you're funding your pensions, you're increasing your, it's not an easy, it's not an easy process. It's going to take a lot of work to do that, but you'd have to work together to figure out what that, what that goal, what's the right goal for the village. There's no, there's no number that's correct for every village. But like I said, you know, if you look at rating agencies, they're, they see that municipalities, cities are the median from 2009 through 2014 has been about 30%. We're a little bit ahead of that. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't be higher than that, you know. The fact that the median's at 30% doesn't mean that that's the right number, you know. If you look at school districts, school districts are at 20, 25%, even lower, right?
Anything else, anyone? Thank you, sir.
So if, after you...
Read this.
Yeah, after I've gone through this, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call.
One thing that's great about the...
I'll read this tonight, Don. I'll call you tomorrow.
One thing is good about the audit, it does give you a picture of the community far as our population, the businesses, you know, what the school districts are, you know, it gives you all that kind of information. So what's good about the audit every year is that it gives you a snapshot, not only a financial snapshot, but a snapshot of how your community looks. And so that's a good thing. And one thing I do want to talk to account about as we move forward is what effect has the new businesses we brought onboard had, had on our bottom line as we move forward? So that's something that we definitely want to talk about as we move forward. All right? All right, with that?
And then the last item I have is that you, I put in front of you the August month. Treasure fight is on the first of August, the first. You can review that and if you have any questions, feel free. September will be ready next. And that's all I have.
Yeah, tell us about your...
Oh, oh. I have accepted a position in the city of Fairburg, Georgia, and so I'm going to be leaving. I will be formally gone by the end of December. I will be on vacation for a couple of weeks in December, however, I will not be here. I will be in Fairburg. And so the village will be actively looking for a new village manager. We will have the ad out within the next week. I mean, we posted not only on our website, but on other websites. And we'll be doing some work through the month of December financially, on our financial reports, because working with the auditors and working with RSM, we've worked very hard to get us where we are. If you remember when we sat here the last time we went through the audit, the one audit finding that kept repeating itself was that we always had too many journal entries. And this year we had one. And so that's a big difference from where we were in the past.
And I just want to say, I want to thank Donna for her time here, really, especially the financial piece has really gotten Hazelcrest back on the road to recovery, which is kind of off the track a little bit. Want to thank her for what she's brought to the village. She's also a Hazelcrest resident. That's always a good thing. We're going to miss her, but it will be a very smooth transition. We're working with the staff and everyone within the village, with our accountants, and it should be a nice, smooth transition as we move forward. We're going to take our time with the process. We are very capable with department heads and a great, wonderful board, and so I'm quite sure we'll be okay as we move through the process. But again, I want to thank Donna for her service, working with us. We're going to miss her, but you know, if you're not in Atlanta, we're going to give you our address and you can basically... Call her up, all right? Okay, with that, I finish our report. Give them a favor legal?
No.
Police.
This Saturday, the police department will be conducting the first stage of the testing process for entry-level police officer. The applicants who have successfully submitted the required documents, they've all been notified. It will be held at HF High School this Saturday.
How many applicants do you have?
In the process right now, 25.
Question, why are you holding it at HF to not Hillcrest?
Oh, it's just out of convenience. We did contact HF High School. We've even held it at Thornwood in the past. It's which facility is available that doesn't have something going on at the time. But you gotta remember, they're all-out schools. HF, Hillcrest, Thorndyne.
Right.
All the ones.
Thornwood, yes.
Thornwood.
That's right.
Total Works have anything? No? Special Services?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give the board and the citizens a little update, more detail concerning our demo projects as the President mentioned. Our third property to be demoed is 3404 Hazel. It was demoed today, demolished today.
Hazel Lane?
Yeah, Hazel Lane. And also, we have, they initiated demo on 2612 Norwood also today. So that should be completed shortly. And our next demo project will be 3,373rd Street, the trustee. So our demo project is going smoothly. As far as building permits, Fat Poppers, and Anytime Fitness, and the plan review, those plan reviews should be completed shortly. That ends my report.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You know, Fat Poppers has been working toward getting here, and I figure Anytime Fitness was not going to really open up until like December or so. That's the season. Open for fitness center, open one in the summer, it might be closed by December. But you open in December, you're going to get people who actually want to come inside.
Coming in in January, and after visit to Fat Poppers. Coming in in January, and after visit to Fat Poppers.
The pop ship open now, right? Okay, Community and Business Development, she's ill, did we ever report from her?
HR.
Oh, HR, I'm sorry. Don't wait on it. HR.
Thank you, Mr. President, and board trustees. Just a couple of things. The village is scheduled for an IMAP, which is an Irma Management Assessment Program, December sixth and seventh, which is actually going to require the cooperation of all the department heads, but basically that's an assessment that evaluates the village's risk management. It usually starts with admin, residentialities, of course, public works, and then fire. The purpose is not only just to actually evaluate our risk management, but then to make sure that we come up with a risk management assessment or SOP, and we make sure that we implement it. So it just helps us with respect to safety and, you know, a lot of the issues that we've had recently. Also, I had the opportunity to attend Irma's Fourth Annual Education Summit in Mayville, and the same day, on that day, we had the Irma Board meeting, so that was, that was very enlightening. And then, we are actually slated to begin, I think I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, our open enrollment, which will take place in December, but Donna and I got the notification today from our broker that our numbers will be in this week, numbers meaning, you know, where we'll go from here in terms of premiums from the providers that we have. And then, you and I and the broker will meet, and we'll discuss what the insurance carriers are bringing to the table, and then we let the broker know whether or not we want them to go back with something better or, you know, another option, so we'll see. That's all in preparation, of course, for open enrollment. The effective date for that actually will be January first. And basically, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Fire.
No report. Thank you.
Okay, Community and Business. I just want to say that this Saturday is the Community Health and Info Day. It's from ten AM to two PM. Please come out. It is, it will be inside, so if it's raining, or it's cold or chilly, you don't have to worry.
Use your mic. People complain that they can't hear us when they watch the program on TV.
Okay, so Community and Health and Info Day is going to be this Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from ten AM to two PM here at the Village Hall, and it's free admission, and it will be inside, so if it's cold and rainy, that you don't have to worry about that, you can still come. And Cedar Weatherization will also be here in taking applications, so I look forward to seeing everyone here.
Thank you so much. Economic Development?
No report.
No report. Okay, I do want to make a statement, I meant to go back under Mayor's report. Just want to put out there, you know, we have some citizens, A-citizens out there pushing the idea that we should break Hazelcrest up into trustee districts, having each trustee over a district, and I just want to remind people of a community of eleven thousand people, to break it up into pieces, it's really not good government, having people fight over which street you're going to pave because it's in your district of a town of eleven thousand is, to me, really doesn't make much sense. Also, you have destroyed basically communities and homeowner associations, you have, because it's based on population, so, and sometimes people just, when they do things, they just want to get elected and think that they could strengthen the electoral body, that they have a better chance of running for government, for office. My thing is that you have six trustees and a village president that you, that could take care of everyone. It's involved, any one time you see them on the street, you could ask them to really take care of any issue within our three-mile circle of a community, and that, I think that gives power to the citizen and power to our community. To try to fragment the community for, I think, its personal gain is something that we should not consider, and I hope citizens are aware and really look at when people knock on their door and ask them to sign something, because it can be something that could really change your community for the worse. So I just want to put that out there, so the citizens can be aware of what's going on within the community.
And just for clarification, you mentioned that we're eleven thousand, you meant fourteen.
Fourteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, fourteen thousand. I gotta read my audit. With that, can I get a motion for public participation for items on the agenda?
I move that we open for public participation for items on the agenda.
Second. Been moved by trustee Slaton, second by trustee Reyes, to open the floor for public participation items on the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
If you have something to say or a question to ask, anything on the agenda, this is the time to come forward. Can I get a motion to close public participation?
I mean, close public participation?
Second.
They're moved by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Grant, to close public participation. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Slaton.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October tenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second. Been moved by trustee Slaton, second by trustee Moore, to approve the regular meeting minutes of October tenth, two thousand and seventeen. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Grant?
Sorry, hold on a second. Thank you, President Osberry. I move to approve Accounts Payable number eighteen dash twelve dated October twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Slaton, to approve Accounts Payable number eighteen dash twelve dated October twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to grant special power of attorney to the village attorney Judith Ann Coleman, ESQ of Rosenthal Murphy, Coblenz, Donahue, granting full power of attorney to do and perform in every act, thing, whosoever...
Whosoever requisite.
Requisite and necessary to be done in and about the premises, commonly known as thirty-six oh one ninety-nine West one hundred and eighty-third Street in Hazelcrest, Illinois.
Clarification, Mayor.
Second.
What is that?
Okay, second first. You second?
I second.
Okay. It's been moved and second, it's been moved by trustee Moore, second by trustee Ramsey, to grant special power attorney to village attorney Judith Ann Coleman, Esquire of Rosenthal Murphy, Coblenz, and Donahue, granting full power and authority to do so from all and every act and things whatsoever requisite and necessary to be done in amount, in about the premises, commonly known as thirty-six oh one dash ninety-nine West one hundred and eighty-third Street, Hazelcrest, Illinois. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, I was just asking if you would clarify what that's about.
This item is a building that we purchased from the land bank. It's located, again, at one hundred and eighty-third Street, thirty-six oh one ninety-nine West one hundred and eighty-third Street. This is the building we're looking at to build our, develop our new village hall. We're looking to move funds to actually purchase the building and sign this over by, have it signed by attorneys who will have the power of attorney to sign the last documents for the building. So this is the beginning of moving our village hall from where we're at now to one hundred and eighty-third Street. All right? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carry. Trustee Ramsey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt the resolution authorizing reimbursement and temporary inter-fund transfer in the connection with the police department improvement.
Second. Been moved by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Moore, to adopt a resolution authorizing reimbursement and temporary inter-fund transfer for connection with the police department improvements. Any discussion on this item?
Discussion. Madam Manager, could you explain what that is, and we talked about it before? I just wanted to get clarification.
At the last meeting, you approved a temporary inter-fund transfer in connection with the new village hall. It should have said, excuse me, village hall and police department. Because it did not say that in the document, we created this document for the police department instead of amending the old document. So now that, as we move forward until the bond is issued, that any, any items that need to be done for the police department or the new village hall can be taken out of one of the tips, and then when the bond is issued, then all that money goes back to the tip.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carry. Trustee Reyes? Oh, we postponed this?
Yes.
I motion to postpone the annual treasurer's report for publication as required.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Reyes, second by trustee Moore, to approve, I mean, to postpone the report of the annual treasurer publication as required. Any discussion on this item?
When we postpone something, we do...
We need a date.
We need a date.
I was next.
Okay.
I'm going to reread it?
Please.
Yes.
The twenty-sixth.
I, I motion to postpone the annual treasury, annual treasurer's report to publication as required for October twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Reyes, second by trustee Moore, to amend the motion of approving this treasurer report.
Postpone.
Until, to October twenty-sixth, postpone to October twenty-sixth. Any more discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carry. Can I get a motion, open the floor for public participation?
I move that we open the floor for public participation.
Second.
They're moved by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Rogers, to open the floor for public participation. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
If anyone wants to speak at this time, the floor is open for any issue they would like to speak about. Can I get a motion to close public participation?
Move that we close public participation.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Rogers, close public participation. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Participation closed. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. We are going to executive session to discuss purchase. So can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we move into executive session.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Slaton, second by trustee Moore. Roll call, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carry, we go into executive session.
Okay.